Everybody, Peter Dubs.
But I don't have one of my.
Isn't that funny how possessive you could get over a pack?
At six o'clock, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. If you'd please stand and join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden. Commissioner Torello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandemosh.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
At this time, oh, no.
Second.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda. We just kind of did that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Minutes of previous meeting. A for 2023, the workshop; B for 2023, the commission meeting; and C, 5, 4 of 23, the standing committee meetings.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final minutes of the April 20, 23 workshop, and the April 20, 23 commission meeting, and the May 4, 23 standing committee meetings.
Support.
You have a motion, support. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no proclamations. Item 8, consent agenda.
This time, I move to approve items 8A through 8I on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, support. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, reports of standing and special committees. Commissioner Vandemosh.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
I had a discussion with Bill Hazelton in regards to the road funding for the townships because we currently, nine hundred thousand, so we will be having an ongoing discussion with that and getting some information to Jeff. So we'll be potentially looking at increasing the funding on that. That's about all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Torello?
Today, I did attend the landfill meeting for that swanna. And that was, that was really informative. And I just want to take a second to let people know that the board years ago, kudos to them because they have, there was so much information. And to know that we were so much ahead was, was awesome. So I learned a lot. It was great.
Awesome.
Yeah. New improvements, thinking bigger.
You're right.
Great.
Thank you. Commissioner Samasco?
Attended the Parks and Rec meeting as the Board of Commissioner designate on the board. Been my third meeting. It was a, it was a good meeting. They had a lot of business. Jim Byer, the Finance Committee Director, went over. They put a lot of time into categorizing and crunching numbers on the various components of our trail system and other park properties, gearing towards, you know, revenue and expense issues and how things are rolling out. A lot going on. Lighthouse, Fort Gresham Lighthouse Station is an ongoing kind of a gem. Always stuff out there. Statewide conference that Dennis Delor went to and actually was asked by the state of Michigan to speak because of how well that got off and how well it's doing. I thought that was a nice thing for Dennis. He's doing a great job. They're working on the resonator. They're putting lights in one of the buildings. It all goes forward as funding comes in. There's, there is an issue with the Marysville Trail. There's a regional non-motorized trail in Marysville that's, has some contention, but they're developing and working on that. The, the Finance Director, as I said, the committee did a great job on that. There's, there's some other issues going on. The Community Foundation, there's Ralph Wilson Foundation, who promotes a lot of the types of things that parks do. We had some changes. It's going to affect the, the ability to seek funding for various things. That's, long story short, it's something that's processed. And then there's the Showmobile. A lot of people in the, in the county are familiar with this Showmobile, the big aluminum thing with the stairs and all that. The one we have has been around a very long time. It is very well utilized. It is rented consistently. That cost like eighty-five thousand twelve years ago. The new, new cost is a hundred and thirty thousand. So it's just typical supply chain stuff and cost of materials and so forth. But it's a lot going on. It's a very, very interesting, very rewarding committee to be on. And that's kind of what happened. It was yesterday, which is kind of nice because it's yesterday. I don't forget what happened.
Thank you. Item 10, citizens wishing to address the board. And just so everyone knows, there's a new clock up this way, too, for the three minutes. So there's the one back here, and then this was just added. So thank you to staff for getting that so that people can watch that. And hopefully, we'll have less interruption. The first person I have is John Thompson regarding 26 Mile.
Hello? I hate the idea of NDAs, especially nowadays with the mega factories tied to Chinese companies. We, the people, have the right to know who wants to do business in our area or all of our country, as a matter of fact. This should not be allowed. When I first heard about the 26 Mile Road expansion, it was said to be light industry. Then you start to hear the words "mega factories." I totally believe that there is a conflict of interest with Jeff Bohm being a commissioner and being on the Board of the EDA. You will put the EDA first before the people. Just like the people in Green Township, Michigan. They, they got blindsided by their county commissioners, and, and they are fighting like hell to keep out a Chinese battery plant. Me and most of the people that this affects worries, worries that we will be, will be next. Because Jeff Bohm and Dave Vandemosh are pushing their agenda. You're hell-bent on getting sewer and water out Palms Road, as you put it, shovel-ready. I totally believe Jeff Bohm and Dave Vandemosh will sell us out in a heartbeat. And that's what worries me, if not today, but down the road you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Watkins, Wales Township, 26 Mile Road.
Well, thank you for the introduction. Sorry for my hoarse voice here. But I'm just open to saying that, you know, Mr. Jeff Bohm and Van Bush, not that all bad. We all have positives and negatives. Depending on, I think they're, especially Jeff. I don't know Mr. Van Bush. I know Jeff. I think his intentions are good in regards to the county at large and what is good for the citizens. But nothing's perfect. I, I think the mistake that Blooming's Green made, the mistake that, you know, that Jeff Bohm and others made is transparency. They got caught up with that, "We know what's right for you. We're going to do things for you, so don't worry about it. Just trust us." I always say that you have blind faith in God only. Everyone else needs data. They refuse to share the data with people, not purposely, just to feel like, kind of pompously. And I think you need to know. So I think, I'm concerned. I'm in the Wales Township Planning Commission. We're dealing with some of the same things. We don't want windmills. We don't want solar. We don't want all the solar industrial energy. We don't want a dollar store. You know, someone that's good, someone that's bad. But I always say to myself, if I wanted to go back in time, I'm taking a trip to Mackinac Island and join myself to go back in time. But, you know, here, we need to move forward. We're in the 21st century, folks. And we need to move forward in the 21st century. So some of the people in rural areas, everyone say green jobs. You know, we want, we want, we want these things. We want to be closer to the, to the, to the things that we can enjoy. Oh, then they say, "Oh, God, don't bring it close to us." It can be both ways. There, there's going to be, the key is progress is going to happen. It has happened since the end of World War II. It moved on. I go back from, as far as back as the Civil War. We've had progress since then. We're not going back. In the words of the late, great John Lewis, he said, "We're not going back. We're going forward." The problem is, if you stay in the past, you're going to get left behind. So my theory is that things are going to happen. What you do is grasp one of the good things that are going to happen and make it a part of you so you can benefit from it and move forward. Because trust me, your children want that. They're looking to the future. They're not looking to be living on Mackinac Island. They're, they're looking to live on 26 Mile Road and other places that have, has things for them. Starbucks, they might have to drive ten miles to get to a Starbucks. I have questionable issues about factories. You know, that, that's, that's an issue in regards to what they come in, they want to take over, and they, they would, you worry about what happens to the environment. That's a great, that does, that is a, a good point that needs to be addressed. But in, in, but in, in dress, in addressing that point, don't block progress. Progress will happen. Do not get stuck in time. If you want to live on Mackinac Island, it's a beautiful place. Go there and visit. But if you want to stay here in Zaker County, you want to enjoy the amenities of going to a Starbucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Masters, 26 Mile Road.
Thank you. And thank you, Kevin. I hate to do this, but I'm going to argue with you. I served 10 years on Planning Commission. I've worked with Planning Commission for 15 years total. Progress, yes. Mackinac Island is a horrible example, first off. That's, that's apples to oranges. Progress, yes, but the whole concept of planning and the whole training of planning is a place for everything and everything in its place. You cannot just advance, disorganized, willy-nilly, things land where they are. You have to maintain what you have, and that's the whole concept of planning. So I ask that anyone that chimes in or makes a vote refers to some form of their prior training or any experience with planning. While we sit with vacant lands and we sit with populations that would feed off of those industries for jobs, for transportation, we need to tend to those. And we do have vacant industrial. Now, to get off of that topic, I'd just like to reiterate to this board. Unfortunately, there's, there's a few members that feel that moving forward on 26 Mile Road would be advisable while the majority, I believe, is hurts or with their constituents. We've had so much, so many people come forward on this that are passionate. And to ignore those people, and I, this is the first one that I've heard publicly that supports it. So that's one versus many. We've got surveys. We've got letters. We've got letters of resolution opposing. To ignore that, to ignore that majority, I ask you, whoever favors this, why are you in office? I, if you're this passionate about something, I'm starting to question why. It's, it's taken so long on this, and I've seen so many people use their time. It's time to focus on the whole point of this. We have good uses. We have roads. We have fire. We went through COVID. We all experienced that together. Now it feels like we're experiencing it all over again. This is ARPA funds, and further than the ARPA funds, I oppose any use for other county funds for this particular purpose. These residents are speaking in their district, and to ignore that, then I think whoever it is who's, who's ignoring that needs to walk away, needs to step away. And the rest of the board needs to adhere that it's time to make a decision on these electors that put them there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Schweihhofer, Chinese Plants.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry that, you know, some of the commissioners are missing because, you know, it's important that they all hear the, the information. It's about Chinese plants, but it sort of ties, is going to tie in with 26 Mile. And some of you may be sick to death of hearing it, but you know what? That's your job. And so I hate to beleaguer it, but I want to keep it before your eyes because I think it's so, so important. I'm sick to death of hearing about the Chinese companies coming in. We, China Township, are not opposed to growth. We have a Planning Commission, a master plan. We follow it. We don't like, you know, companies coming in willy-nilly and wanting us to sort of bow over and just let them do what they'd like to do. I know there's the nondisclosures. So you could say, "Well, you know, it's not a Chinese plant. We can't tell you that." I'm still hearing that at my local level, too. But I'm sure some of you have to have an inkling of who it might be. We have only so much land. God's not making any more. We have precious farmland, and once it's gone, it's gone. And I sometimes get the feeling that we're looked down upon. We're a fifth-generation farm. And, you know, well, it's a farmer, and, you know, they've got the land, and, well, you know, there's so much other things that they can do. You know, they're probably going broke. Well, you know what? I think you really want farmers because if you don't have farmers, you're not going to have food. You're not going to have the crops. You're not going to have the cattle. And some people would like to get rid of those. You know, but I don't know too many that don't like a steak. I'm so sick to death of hearing about, you know, green space, a green energy, and, you know, we need to do this, and we need to do that. I, I really do believe that the Chinese companies, you know that they're taking our water, and then the farmers have to pay that much more. They're not getting it cheap. Trust me. The farmers are paying through the nose for it. They're getting our land. They have hog farms. I would like to just kind of remind you that when we had a pork shortage here, they didn't have a pork shortage in China. We want Chinese companies? I don't think so. We're going to bring the Chinese in to run them because, of course, they're smarter than we are. We don't have the technology, right? So we've got the Chinese coming in. They're taking up our land. They want to use all of our land in our townships. I think it's time to stop. I think it's time for every one of you to listen and think, and listen to your heart. Listen to what the people are saying. I, you know, I keep hearing, "Ugh," you know, "We just hear from you people. You know, the real, the real people out there really want it." I don't believe it. Where in the hell are they? So thank you very much for your time, and, you know, you're probably going to see me again. So thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Vicki Blackburn?
Good evening, commissioners. This evening, I'm here to support and applaud the recommendation of the Health Subcommittee to welcome Mr. Kevin Watkins, RN, to the Health Advisory Board. We need what he brings to the table, expertise, and excellence. Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Libby Prill, ARPA.
Good evening. Despite what Jeff said at the town hall, our community consists of some very intelligent, savvy individuals who recognize truth from deception. We do understand jobs. We understand revenue and taxes. I think that, Jeff can take the heat for it. Jeff, in particular, is trying to force a false flag that we have to change, that it's inevitable, or that people who objected this don't want change. Kevin, I'm arguing with you two nice men that you seem to be. It isn't about that. I think that's just a, a bunch of rubbish and just something that's thrown out there to, you know, try to convince people that we're, you know, phobic about something, and we aren't. If we were talking about another culture, the, the right to ring bells and, and pray and drop to your knees on the street, we would, we would be standing up in defense of that right to pursue a type of lifestyle that someone has come here to pursue. And that's the same for those of us. I fled the Starbucks in the city. I came from Chesterfield. It was farmland when I moved there, and it just boomed into, it was like living in Troy. I mean, you know what it's like now. Wasn't for me, certainly not for my kids. My kids commute. I commuted. It's a, it's a lifestyle choice. I want the green space. And so I agree with Liz that there is a place for everything. And we, when we talk about having the need for diversity and respect for that diversity, it seems to stop when we start talking about farmland. What we want, we want water and soil protected and treated with respect because we can't eat a battery and we can't eat a microchip when our kids grow hungry. We need to recycle blight and put industry where it belongs, not where ED members turn a bigger profit. Just this week, President Biden has put unspent ARPA funds on the table as a possible budget cut as a concession in the debt ceiling negotiations. While some communities efficiently distributed these funds to aid in post-shutdown recovery, St. Clair County has sat on their funds in order to pursue a development that served corporations, some of Jeff's EDA cronies, and the smarter laborers in other counties. Now we may have to play beat the clock to get these funds distributed before there is nothing to distribute. We really just don't know at this point. Municipalities have projects ready to address. I think that you need to vote, and you need to vote tonight, whether who's missing or not. You've got a quorum here. Vote to distribute those funds to each district, and it needs to be done tonight. And P.S., no on the $1 million for the engineering. I say no to all of it. You've got grant money coming from elsewhere. Go out and seek that grant money, but don't take it from the taxpayers that it belongs to in this county.
Wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Cass, Airport?
Board members, my name is Dan Cass, business owner and resident of St. Clair County. It has been brought to our attention that the county wants to run and operate the St. Clair County Airport by themselves instead of using an outside contractor for the fixed base operations. My concern, along with others, is that the county has not looked at all the risk and mitigation measures to operate the airport by themselves using county employees that have no experience in handling multimillion-dollar aircrafts. As a taxpayer, if anything were to go wrong, the risk and liability could go back on the taxpayer, on the taxpayer. Why would the county be open to taking the risk that could jeopardize taxpayer dollars? Board members, has everyone had the chance to review the airport RFP and submitted proposals prior to making a decision here tonight? Did you know in the airport proposal, one of the requirements were properly trained or certified personnel? To my knowledge, the county has no properly trained employees to operate the airport. Operating an airport requires specialized knowledge and expertise in aviation, airport management, and preventative maintenance, along with a contingency plan to mitigate risk. As a taxpayer and someone who knows the airport's current situation, St. Clair County does not have the necessary experience or resources to manage all aspects of an airport, including safety, security, traffic, and customer service. Again, I ask the Board, have you really studied and reviewed the overall plan to take over the airport? Have you done a risk evaluation on the entire assets? Do you have the qualified team in place to run the entire operations? The county has one aviation employee, and they are not trained for FBO services or aircraft handling. The county has no engineers on field, no risk and mitigation plan in place, and the security is weak. Regular maintenance and inspections of the airport infrastructures need to be completed to prevent failures or malfunctions that could compromise safety of customers and employees. In a fast-evolving industry like aviation, the ability to adapt and respond to market dynamics along with embracing technological advancement are crucial for an airport's success. Government-run entities have constraints in achieving this level of flexibility and success. Government, I ask the Board to delay and object on a decision on the airport tonight. Each Board member should have the right to analyze and comprehend the various components and information provided in all the bid documents. If you have not seen the bids, just say, "I object to the Board moving forward until an interview of all the contractors have been completed." Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Linky, Pat Patterson?
So I'm here tonight. I'm not going to talk about 26 Mile Road. I think everyone, everyone kind of knows where the constituents feel on that. But I like to talk about Pat Patterson. He was in here a couple of weeks ago looking for a lot of money from you guys. And Commissioner Rushing, you simply asked him for a business plan, and he said, "Oh, we'll get on that." The City of Port Huron gave him almost a half million dollars last year. He didn't have a business plan. So why this dude doesn't have a business plan already in place, and he was stumped when you brought that up and said, "They'll work on that for him to come to you and ask you for money before even having a business plan"? You all should be looking at it. I would proceed very cautiously with Mr. Patterson. He's a fraud. You should look into his expenditures from the $400,000 or whatever he got from the City of Port Huron. $25,000 of that went to a website. Another $20,000 went to office furniture. $5,000 went to computers that he had sent to his eight-year-old or nine-year-old daughter down in Grand Lang, which we'd like to get a, you know, explanation of that. You know, I can only imagine how much he spent on the 20-minute slideshow that he sat here to pump himself up and tell everybody how great he is and how lucky you are to have him in the community. You know, but one number that really stuck out to me with Mr. Patterson was, they said he had, he sent 138 people to rehab. That's what they transported to rehab. 138 for $400,000. There is a woman in town right now. She runs the dry dock recovery group. She has zero funding. Nobody supports her. She gets donations, but she gets no support from the county or from the city as far as grant money or public money. She transported 500 people to rehab last year. People call her up in the middle of the night. They call her at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. She hops in her vehicle that has, I think she's only 350,000, 400,000 miles on it. She finds them a bed. Sacred Heart has actually trespassed her off their property because there's a state law, and I'm not totally familiar with it, but if somebody's in withdrawals or there's something, if they drop them off at a rehab facility, they have to take them. There's no if, ands, or buts. They have to take them. So she takes everybody to Sacred Heart when she has to, and they don't like that. She still keeps taking them because she's trying to help the community. Pat Patterson sat up here, and I'll tell you, he came on very slimy today. I don't know Pat. Never talked to him. Don't know a lot about him, but just that little that I saw at the meeting here this last week, it left a really bad taste in my mouth, and he seemed very disingenuous about what he's trying to do. So I would just caution the Board, if you're going to give him some money, because I believe what, what the program of B-Rock may be a good thing, and we need to help the addiction. We need to help the people in this community that are suffering from it. Pat Patterson is just not the champion. So before you guys give him a bunch of money, like the City of Port Huron did already, take a deep dive into where that money's going and what's going to go on, and make sure that it's going to help the people because he seems to be wanting to present an image, and that image isn't helping people. The last thing I want to talk about is, I know you guys are talking- The last thing I want to talk about is, I know you guys are talking about court-appointed attorneys real quick. Just know that Amberina Med, I'm, everyone knows with litigation, I'm involved in custody and all that crazy stuff. Amberina Med was appointed in my case, she's gotten almost $40,000 out of county money as a GAL, and you guys are voting on other court-appointed attorneys in her rate, so you should take a look at that, because some of that money's being misappropriated.
Got it wrapped up.
Yeah, so, yeah, when they're, whatever theirs is, she's getting $150 an hour, and she's the only attorney that's ever gotten it. So just understand that sometimes your money is going probably not where it should be. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so Item 12A, Approval of County Disbursements for April of 2023.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to approve the April 23 county disbursements in the amount of $11,218,570.95?
I have a motion by Vandabosh, supported by Samasco. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Item 12B, to approve the fiscal year 2023 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $179,100.
Hate to be redundant, but this time I move to approve the Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $179,100.
Support.
A motion and a support. Do I have any questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12C, Child Adolescent Health Care or Health Center Program Implementation.
This time I move to approve the Child and Adolescent Health Center Program Implementation Grant for the Algonac Community School District for the fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $180,000.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Yes. I was going through some of that, and I probably am a little bit behind on asking some questions.
Can you pull your microphone closer a little bit, please?
Thank you. So I know I'm probably a little bit behind the eight ball here, but I was going through the applications that were on the agenda, and I am late to ask some questions. And so, I know that Item D is kind of the same thing, but yet for Yale. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table this for 30 days, so that we can look more into the policy and procedures that are going to be implemented, and also the consent policy that they're going to propose. I think it would just be beneficial before we actually make a vote on it.
Do you have any, if I, I'm sorry?
Yes, you may.
Sorry.
Do you have any specific major concerns?
Well, yeah, when the, because the population is less significant than the Port Huron High School area, so I don't know when the grant expires, how will these positions be financed? And I mean, I don't know if you want me to go through all this, but parental consent was also a big thing for me, because I know children under the age of 18, it cannot be seen without parental supervision or guardian. And so, I don't know how the consent policy's going to work, like if it's just going to be a blanket form when they're, you know, you go to school and all of a sudden they just pass the blanket form out to parents, and so they can just see these children, you know, whenever they may need attention. I have a concern about that. And then the mental health part of it, I, obviously, that's a big issue with me, because I know recently they just took the gender dysphoria off of the mental health issues, where I think that, you know, these advisors that are in the schools, are they going to give them the accurate care that they're going to be needing? Because to me, there's just three genders, so there might be an issue.
If I could, Georgia?
Yes.
Is there anything in here potentially that the parents would not be included? Because on this program, the grant approval, I'm sorry, on the Child Adolescent Health Center Grant for Algonac, and I imagine the same thing for Yale on both of those, is there any protections in here to where potentially the teachers would eliminate any consideration with the parents in case a child is guided toward gender? Because that's, I think, what she's bringing up.
So Commissioner Samasco has some, something to add to that.
Joy called me today, and she asked me some of the questions that she asked here today. And quite frankly, I've been tied up with broadband. Looking at, and that is a deep and wide and confusing and technical subject, and we've had interviews and so forth, so I really didn't deep dive into this piece of it. But in February, I went and saw our Health Director, and I was encouraged by comments from our Administrator that we wouldn't have any of the issues that kind of were around the predecessor and, you know, this type of thing. I had a really good conversation with Liz King. And I went there and I'd asked for, I started looking at county policy, administrative policy, which we do have, let me get rid of this, administrative policy, which we do have a number of administrative policy, but not a lot. And the Health Department has their own policy, and the Health Department actually has tons of policy. And one of the policies is for teen health centers and in-school clinics. And that also has policy on consent forms and so forth. Now, state law, under the Public Health Code, a minor 14 years of age can receive, request and receive mental health treatment and other forms of treatment without the knowledge or consent of the parent. Now, that's what the state law provides for. It does not say that providers have to keep that confidential necessarily, I'm not sure about that. But the point, I think, with, I would second Joy's motion, because she wants to take a look at this, and I'll take a little bit closer look at it, to see, as I called Liz King as well, she's very accessible, I have her cell number, I caught her on the way, you know, back home to get ready for the meeting, and she wasn't going to be here tonight, she, because it cleared the committee meeting, we didn't have questions at committee, so she's not here. But she said, you know, "Have Joy call me, she'll meet with her, she'll go over all the forms and come go take a look at the clinic in Port Huron and so forth." So I did that, and then I called three different parents in the Yale School District to find out what's going on with the clinic, you guys want it, not want it. It's been presented, and Liz has told me, Liz King has told me, it's well-received and wanted in these various schools. However, the three parents I talked to didn't really know a lot about it, and they had the same concerns that Joy expressed and Dave expressed. So I think, in fairness, we could table it and look at that, get some information on it. Now, Liz wants to post these jobs, the grant was accepted, they want to post these jobs and get that going. I don't know if it's an urgent matter, I don't see where it would be more urgent than taking some time to look at policies and consent and all that to get comfortable with it. And quite frankly, I had not had time, back in February, I've got my hands on most of the policies of the Health Department, I just haven't had time to look at that volume of information. So I'm convinced myself that it's worth at least maybe taking a look at, and I apologize for not having this at committee, as I'm sure Joy said the same thing, she felt kind of, I'm behind the eight ball here, I should have done it back then. But things develop and people contact you, and then you look at stuff on the final vote. So that's where we're at today. So I would second the motion to table it for 30 days, with the caveat, we could bring it back for final action if you're satisfied at the next meeting of the committee, two weeks, three weeks, whatever that is. If we need to hurry it up, we could, we could set it back on then if you're comfortable.
If I could ask the Chair, I think we've got two things here. One, I have to withdraw my motion, or we can vote on it and take the vote wherever it stands, it was either going to fail or succeed on a vote if we take that.
I think hers was a motion to amend. I think she was amending your motion, Dave, but to table it, you don't have to, you don't have to withdraw a motion, just table it. You're not withdrawing the motion, she's just tabling the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we have a second.
I think the proper form would be to withdraw my motion, but my other question would be, is there a timeframe on either of these two grants, the one for Algonac or Yale?
So this is, our application has already been approved, so this is the actual grant agreement. But if the board would like more time, we could certainly bring this back to the committee, you could have some discussions with Director Liz King, and then she could also be available at the committee meeting to answer questions as well.
And she's offered to have, if you, any Commissioner wants to go out and take a look at functioning facilities and talk to staff and see how it works, and look, and I actually have a lot of the policy, and I spent the last half an hour, an hour before the meeting tonight, kind of looking into that, because I've had it, just didn't get a chance to look at it. There's a lot of policy out there on a lot of different areas, for teen health, service centers in schools, parental consent, and so forth, and there's the state statute and how that all fits together.
Well, if I could, then, if I could, I'd like to withdraw my motion, and then she can forward her motion after this has been rescinded.
Can I ask one more question before you do that? So approving, what we're being asked to do tonight is to approve the grant agreement. Whether or not we approve the grant agreement, would the policies you're talking about come after, these policies are not within the grant agreement, is the grant agreement the...
So that's correct, the grant agreement is the funding, but if there's specific Health Department policies that would be tied to delivering the service, that is, happens outside this grant. So we could accept the grant agreement and then have those further discussions with the Health Department on how the board would like to see those policies take place, would be another option you could do as well.
I was also told by our Director that there are certain requirements that are tied to the funding, so, and I don't know what those are, but that's like state.
Yeah, the certain services, they are required to provide, but, you know, some of the concerns that you're talking about would be more internal policy-driven.
And this issue was a big issue last fall, it was a big issue all last summer, so I think it's definitely worth taking a real close look at, so people understand it, so we understand it better and make the right decision.
I just didn't know if, if one had to do with the other. I mean, if you can't, if there's a policy that can't be implemented that this board would want to see, and that would lose, would you then, I mean, at some point, is there a chance that we would not accept the grant at all? And so, I think that would be, because if that's not the case, and everything happens outside of this agreement, then is there, is there a reason to...
Who would do the hiring and who would set the work order on that? I mean, is that something the Health Department hires, or is that something admin does?
No, those positions report to the Health Department, so they would handle the hiring and recruiting of those positions.
Without particular involvement of the board or the administration, other than to approve it as a final matter?
That's correct. The board would approve the positions to be funded, and then the Health Department would hire them as they would others. And I can answer Commissioner Turello's question regarding funding. Typically, positions that are funded with a grant, when that grant goes away, those positions are eliminated as well unless the board makes a decision to fund it or continue on. So they're not automatically funded, the board would have to make a decision to continue to fund in a different manner.
Historically, some have cases like this, some stay in, some go, on a case-by-case basis.
Well, good, money gets people's attention. $180,000. If it's not going to cause any harm or damage, I'd rather withdraw my motion, because if it's not a timeframe, and as soon as we do this, if the money goes to the Health Department, potentially, they can just go forward, start doing the hiring and everything, before all our questions get answered. If we go ahead and prove this tonight, I'd rather have this withdrawn and tabled, and if we can do it in two weeks, potentially, we could have a final, or three weeks, our next committee meeting. Potentially, we could put it up for final action at that time, if we get all our concerns addressed prior to that.
Just so I'm clear, I mean, my understanding, I would disagree with you, Dave, a little bit, our Administrator is supervisory position over the Health Director, that's correct?
Yes.
So they can't really, they can do things with some authority, but if our Administrator says, "Hey, we're going to wait on this," they'd have to wait on it. That's my, we have oversight authority to, to quite a degree over the Health Department.
So you'd like...
So you're wrong, Dave, you're wrong, Dave.
I'm going to add that to the record.
Add that, put that on the record.
So you'd like to withdraw your motion, and then we don't, we don't have to take any action? Then if you withdraw the motion, we just will, I mean, I suppose you could make...
I can just bring it back to...
We could just bring it back, so we don't have to have any further motion. You withdraw the motion, we move on to item, well, we probably want to do the same with D then?
Right.
Because they're related?
Yeah. If we can, please.
That's what I would like to do, so I would like to withdraw my motion.
And then does Commissioner Vandabosh have to second, since he seconded?
You have no objection?
No objection to withdrawing. Okay, so the motion is withdrawn, and Items 12C and 12D will be handled at a later date. Item 12E, the appointment to the CMH Authority Board. 12E.
Oh, I've got that. At this time, I move to appoint Robert Johnson, Member-at-Large of the Community Health, Mental Health Authority Board for a three-year term expiring March 31 of 2026.
Thank you, do you have a support?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I would just note that Joy called me on this as well, the second one, I think, is going to be some questions from her, and then, I didn't know either of the people particularly, but I did call Commissioner Rushing about it, because he's been on the board some time, and he actually knew the other gentleman, so...
I think that's I.
We're not there yet, but, I mean, we're doing the one fellow, but then you have the next one, and that's why I was in support of that, because essentially, Dave said that was, thought that was an appropriate appointment, and the person, I believe, resides in his district. Is that correct, Dave?
I think that's on I.
Is that I?
Yeah.
I.
I.
Which one are you on?
E.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right.
Are you still seconding the motion?
Yeah, I was.
No, Mr. Samasco.
Yeah, I was still seconding the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and support to appoint Robert Johnson, Member-at-Large of the CMH Authority Board. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12F, An Agreement with Able Eyes.
I'm sorry, what?
Item 12F?
That's mine, yep, that's mine. At this time, I would move for the appointment of Able Eyes to the same board.
Support.
All right, I have a motion and a support to approve the Agreement with Able Eyes for the library branches in the amount of $17,934. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Turello?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
Who's seconding, Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vandabosh. Item 12G, to the service agreement with Port Huron Family Radio for advertising?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the service agreement with Port Huron Family Radio, Inc., for a term of 01-01-23 through 12-31-23 in the amount of $10,000 for advertising on WGRT for Veteran Affairs.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turello?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 12H, The Agreement with Qualtrics LLC.
At this time, I'd like to approve the Agreement with Qualtrics LLC for the Health Department for the term of April 17, '23 through April 16, '24, in the amount of $28,000.
Support.
Thank you, I have a motion and support. Any questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item 12I, for the Board of Health.
All right, I have this one, if I could, what I'm going to do is potentially make two motions. So my first motion will be, move to appoint Kevin Watkins to the Advisory Board of Health, representing Member-at-Large, remainder of a two-year term expiring 12-31-23.
Support.
I have a motion and support.
Little discussion.
Yep, any questions, comments?
Of course, Kevin and I have had discussions in the past, and I think we resolved, and I think we come to a pretty good agreement on many things now, so we got a pretty good relationship with them, and we can talk and have a discussion on things. So I do definitely support Kevin Watkins for the Advisory Board of Health.
That was the gentleman I was talking about. I did talk to Dave about that, because I'd heard that you had, told me some things about that a while ago, and I'm glad it worked out, so thank you.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, and thanks for everybody submitting their applications for those positions, but I did receive some conversation in regards to Mr. Watkins, that during the COVID time, he stood very strong and bold with Dr. Merkington on the COVID and the mandated issues, and some constituents are concerned that if he is appointed to the advisory board, that he may not be open to discussion, or may not honor the individual rights of people in regards to their bodily autonomy. So hopefully, moving forward, that he'd be open to that.
My feeling on Kevin is very headstrong, much like myself, and I get my heels dug in. I don't budge too much, and on Dr. Merkington, I think we both are on opposing sides on that, but I believe in our beliefs, we both thought that what we were doing was correct, and I believe he did that. I think he's going to do the same thing if, once he, if he gets onto the Board of Health. So I do have confidence in him, so just for the many conversations we've had after the fact, so, and we had good conversations afterward, you know, once it was said and done, he was able to, you know, it's done with, and we moved on.
And this is an at-large position, is that correct?
That's correct.
And he resides in your district, Dave?
Yes, he does, Wales Township.
That's always important to me, thank you.
And he also has expertise in the township, and of course, his supervisor disagreed with him on the one issue tonight, but he does serve at the pleasure of Liz Masters. She is the supervisor, as you know, the supervisor makes all appointments for Planning Commission, and he does serve on the Planning Commission for Wales Township. So he has expertise in government as far as planning.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and support to appoint Kevin Watkins to the Advisory Board of Health. There are no, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I guess I got to do part two now. And concerns, so I guess I could, I guess I'll ask the chair, should I move to make the appointment first, to do it, or to have a discussion prior to, or, because the motion might get withdrawn?
I think you make the motion, and then we go from there.
Okay. I'll move to appoint Alyssa, if I pronounce that correct. Maturen to the Advisory Board of Health, representing member-at-large, remainder of a two-year term expiring 12-31-23.
Okay, do I have a support?
Support.
Discussion.
Yes. Sorry, tonight's my night, I guess. So going through, also, her application as well, thank you, I don't know who you are, but thank you for submitting your application to the appointment as well. And again, I had conversation with constituents that also did examine her application, and I think they were, it was stated that the global health, they found as a, it was a bit frightening, as the Trump administration had taken us out of the World Health Organization by stopped funding due to the demands of the people being forcibly vaccinated, mandated, and hindering them from the travel, et cetera, et cetera. In the current administration, we have placed our nation again back into the World Health Organization, and at the end of this month, there will be voting to whether or not our nation will give up its national sovereignty to this international non-governmental organization, which is the UN Health Organization, which then they would have power to dictate over a hundred and two, a hundred and two nations. So in conversation, it was stated that they thought that maybe having her to be appointed to the board could be a little bit too aggressive for our community. They said that, obviously, I know that there was a lot of conversation based on our health and our health rights, and I observed it from the audience side over the last few years, why a lot of you guys kind of took it up here, hearing the masses and what they were pleading for about individual rights to make their own bodily autonomy decisions, and so just for the constituents that I heard, maybe it's maybe not the right appointment for our community at this time. And that's-
So you're not supporting that particular?
I'm not.
Yes, sir.
And Joy called me on this, that other matter, and quite frankly, I hadn't really looked at it that close to see where this person's training was, but she received a master's degree in global health, so of course, I look and see what global health is. Essentially, from what I can garner in the forty-five minutes I looked at it, you know, global health, a master's degree in global health, global health and understanding of healthcare at international and interdisciplinary level includes a study, research, practice, medicine, focus on healthcare, healthcare equity for populations worldwide. A World Health Organization is the most prominent primary agency advancing global health. I don't have a whole lot of use of the World Health Organization, I'll be honest about that. How is global health different than public health? Public health professionals are involved in local level, those in global health focus on problems and policy issues across national borders. A lot of the problems, I think, that we've had locally stem from things that happen nationally, and is pushed down from agencies like the World Health Organization, the CDC, and other agencies that are not local. So the top six global health issues, pandemics, environmental factors, air pollution, climate change, of course, economic disparities to healthcare access, public health forums encouraging physicians enroll and reduce barriers to healthcare, there's nothing wrong with that, political factors, finding solutions aimed to improve refugee and migrant healthcare through efforts across borders. You know, that's, to me, not someone I want advising our health department. Noncommunicable diseases, reducing the number of noncommunicable diseases, that's a pretty normal thing. Health, animal health is one of their goals, food sourcing, agricultural supply practices, irrigation, pesticide use, waste management, you know, that to me is way beyond what I see, from what I want from our health department or people that advise our health department. So I'm going to, and the other thing that's important to me is, this is a constituent, and she called me as well, I forget her name, but she called me as well, and maybe she called others, I don't know, sharing those same concerns, and I, quite frankly, didn't know a lot about the global health piece, and I think she said to me that she wanted an opportunity to apply for that position, and hadn't seen it, didn't know about it, so I didn't know if any of that was going to happen, but she was from your district, and I did chat with her, so I'm going to go to follow your lead a bit on that too, as well as my own concerns that I have based on the issue you raised. So that's my, that's my position on that.
Okay.
I got two questions for our administrator.
Sure.
I believe the applications were due on this position by May 1st?
May 1st.
Yep, that's correct.
Sorry.
If, so I guess I've got two more questions. If we continue this motion and take a vote on the motion as presented, and it fails, that vacancy would take consideration for an applicant in the future?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the applicant that, and I'll get her name wrong, Maturen, if we vote and she does not get this position, would she still be in for consideration if we accept the other application?
If the board votes to not appoint her, then in order to revote, someone that voted no would need to bring it back forward, because the motion would fail.
Spot on.
Great. So do you want to, you made the motion, do you want to continue with the motion? Do you want to withdraw the motion and only appoint one person tonight? What's your?
Well, I myself am not comfortable from the information that has been provided to me. I think, I would like to leave the motion as, and we take a vote and see where we're standing.
I think the only thing I would add, and I don't, I mean, I saw what was posted there, to the flip side of that, it's information, it's another voice at the table and things that, that may come up in our county. I don't know if it's the majority, but to have someone with some, there are a lot of people maybe I don't agree with, but I would still seek out someone who had information that was different from mine. And so I don't know that it's always a bad thing, or it could be a negative, as it is only an advisory board.
Kevin, Kevin might be a very good example of that, just for a reference.
So I mean, reading it, I don't know that I read it and thought, oh my gosh, this could be really bad. I think it's a viewpoint that there, some of the things that you listed off are concerns that probably there are people in our county have, and so if someone is well-versed in some of those things, I'm not sure that that's a negative. So that's, you know, so I didn't read it the same as the three of you did, when I saw that, that experience.
I didn't notice it until Joy called me, I looked at it, I really, I just totally missed it, but.
Well, you got it wrong.
I know.
And it's tough enough getting people to apply for these positions, whether it's this board or other boards, the library board, you can pick any of the numerous boards. Getting people to fill those, quality, good, honest people that care for their, what they're doing, that's tough, even at township level, trying to fill zoning board of appeals, at least not at, you get people on the zoning board, they might meet once, I'm sure Fort Grashit meets more, but Riley might not meet once a year, and if they do-
You have to meet four times a year legally.
Scratch that from the record.
Not for a general township. Fort Grashit's a charter.
Charter, general.
He brought up Fort Grashit.
I'm saying, I used to be the secretary for the CBA, and I remember that.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a support. I think the only thing, should, should the motion go and this person is not appointed, it will be reposted? Because the, because there was a deadline, so we would repost it and take men, lots more, reopen the posting.
So yes, we could do that. We could also, the board could choose to not vote this evening, and we could repost it, and then we could have, if we have multiple candidates, we could have them come in and speak with you, so you could get to know them, if you would prefer to do that as well.
Because this, I believe the applicant that we got is in your district, Joy?
Oh, the-
Dawn?
Dawn?
Dawn, yeah, yes.
And we're being a new commissioner, you know, if you're not aware of things, I know when I first got here, I had to do a lot of learning to be a commissioner.
No, I just mean if she, Dawn might not be the only person who would show interest. So I would, I would like to see it if, whether it, whether we vote and we choose not to move forward with this candidate, or we take no action, I would like to see it made more publicly available and see who else may feel the same way as Ms. Holt.
I'm good either way.
Is there a way to do this, that Kevin only gets appointed and started from scratch? I can withdraw my motion to start that way?
Kevin's already, Kevin's already done.
Yep, Kevin.
Kevin's already done.
I know, but Kevin, we took care of Kevin tonight. Now we got one more vacancy. Is there a way to do this? If I withdraw my motion, then we just start from scratch?
Yep.
Yes, if you take no action, I, we can go ahead and post that position again to get more applicants.
I'm, yeah.
What you is getting worse.
I withdraw my support.
And I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw, okay. Thank you.
Just to draw your motion first.
Okay, item 12J, the 2022 Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
It's me. At this time, I move to approve the 2022 Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement, the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and no cents.
Support.
Thank you. A motion and support. Any questions or comments? And this is just the agreement?
Just, I mean, voice.
Voice vote, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You don't need a voice vote, we'll call on that, because it's mine.
Because it's the grant agreement. I know. Okay, item, motion carries. Item 12K to the Board of Canvas, excuse me, canvassers' compensation.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the compensation schedule for the Board of Canvassers as presented.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's roll.
Roll call, I know, I stopped. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12L, letter of support for Haida.
Can I get a motion to support, for the letter of support for Harson's Island Transit Authority seeking alternative transportation services?
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12M.
This time, I move to appoint Assistant Chief Brian Kerrigan to the Central Dispatch Advisory Board, Criminal Justice Representative alternate for the remainder of a four-year term expiring 12-31 of 2024.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12N for the, for the agreement with Highland.
This time, I would move for the support of the agreement with Highland for an additional document composition license for the prosecuting attorney, three-year term in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Looks like some kind of a software.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12O, addendum L.
Ms. Chair, could I make a motion to approve addendum L to the operating agreement with Airmark Correctional Services for inmate food services in the approximate amount of eighty-seven thousand for a term of 5-1-23 through 12-12-31-23?
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? My question would be, with the approximate amount of eighty-seven, so is that kind of an up to, or if it exceeds that, would they have to come back? Are they pretty comfortable that it won't exceed this?
So that is an estimate based on our population and the number of meals served every day, but you are approving the increased per meal rate, so if they serve more meals, then that does not need to come back.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12P, the agreement with AEW.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pre, approve the agreement with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick for the architectural services for the day treatment and night watch renovation project in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand seven hundred.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12Q for the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Application.
This time, I move to approve the fiscal year 2024 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Application, the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I'm personally familiar with that, having, you know, practiced in that court. Judge Tomlinson does a great job, provides such service to people, and the staff is really dedicated, and just the patience and the ability to work with folks that are suffering[1546.27] that are suffering from, you know, mental health issues is really a good thing to have in places. That was one of these pilot programs that started that kind of went away that we've been keeping up. And I just can't say enough good about it because it really helps people that really need that kind of support.
Mrs. Chair, it, jail's not a place for them, and this helps keep them out of jail when we can. And most of the people that go through this program, it's extremely hard to house.
And, and the prosecution is not for them either, and they come out of it maybe with no conviction because they, they do the training, they do all the life skills, they do all the reporting, and they get them on their feet and find them housing and help them, and, you know, it's really, it's really good.
Wonderful. Thank you. No more questions and comments? This is just to submit the application, correct? So just a voice vote? Is that what we're doing? Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12R, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Grant Application.
This time, I would move to approve the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Grant Application for year end 23/24 in the amount of $3,593, six, five, $3,593,694 and 46 cents.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments?
Just, uh, Mr. Linky talked about some representation by one of the attorneys. Just for clarification, um, Mike Boucher's office, I don't believe Amberina Meds. I know she's not in that office, so that was kind of a tangent, I think, on, on how some of that money's spent. Now, it does come out of that budget because in conflict cases and so forth, or maybe she has a contract, I don't know.
Uh, so the guardian mat light him appointments come out of the probate court budget. That is separate from the public defender's office.
So she's working for Woody Brown's court?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12S.
Mrs. Chair, but, uh, Mrs. Chair, I'd like to make an appointment to Randy Bennett for clergy and Melissa Cunningham for hospital alternate for the Homeland Security Emergency Management Advisory Council.
Support. Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12T, Resolution 23-07.
This time, I would move to adopt Resolution 23-07, setting the court-appointed attorney rate to pay Shankler County Circuit Court.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support to adopt Resolution 23-07. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12U, the FBO Services.
This time, I move to bring fixed-based operator services under the supervision of the Airport Director and to add two full-time and one part-time airport FBO maintenance worker positions to the airport manning table.
Have a support?
Support.
Okay, I have a motion support. Questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is this the, uh, what they saw was commenting on in public comment? That's this particular item?
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Light on that. What's, what he was very passionate about.
So, um, we did receive three bids for this, and our, the internal committee did review the bids. Um, and we did a cost out on bringing the service in-house. We did that cost out in the past two times where we also looked at FBO services. So it's something that we have routinely done.
How many years back does that go historically? What are you talking about?
Probably about 10.
So it's not like, so it's long, long time practice, policy's in place for a long time, and you guys follow the policy on that.
And so the bids came in, um, basically the low bid is what we're proposing in-house, up to $100,000, more than that. And our airport does currently operate at a deficit, so any increase in this bid would have to increase our appropriation to that operating deficit.
What's concerned to me, okay, the county's taking over airport management. Kathy from the airport, is she still there? She used to be there. No, she's gone?
Uh, yep, our airport director, Katie, is here. And the liability concerns, um, you know, this has all been reviewed with our insurance carrier and all those requirements, um, that we're very comfortable with.
Okay, so this whole business about not doing interviews or interviewing people, I just didn't get what he was talking about, why?
So, um, you know, similar to the broadband, we didn't interview all the applicants based on the price proposal. We looked, you know, we looked at what was in our range, and we also looked at the internal, and we found that we can have more staff, greater flexibility, and by providing the service in-house.
And it's your recommendation that we, that we do this as administrator?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Uh, just two things. One, I'm sure that the liabilities are going to remain the same, whether we do it outside the, outside of St. Clair County employees or inside.
Uh, no, a portion of the liability does shift to us because our employees will be, um, moving the aircraft. So that liability does shift, and so there is a $12,000 increase in our insurance premium for that, which is accounted for in our cost out.
I get something similar with my business, so, uh, my insurance.
We're well insured?
Yes, we are.
That's good.
Can I ask one question? But there, there was a time in the past that the St. Clair County did operate the airport, was, did they not?
Yes, there, there was a period of time where we did, um, pump our own fuel. It's been, um, back and forth over the years that, I'm trying to think, that's probably back maybe 15-plus years ago that we did that for a period of time, um, prior to bringing on another FBO service.
Katie, do you have anything you'd like to add to?
Um, basically, I heard everyone's concerns, and I want to reassure that, uh, we really did look at all the bids. We looked at the proposals, we, uh, heard what our local concerns were. Um, and to give some reassurance, this is what I used to do back in my home state. Um, I've been in aviation for about 15 years professionally. I was pumping gas, I was, uh, doing the fuel inspections, reconciling all of that back in Minnesota. So it's, it is a skill and talent that we have at our disposal. So we are looking to, uh, just have that be internal.
And I suppose if for some reason it didn't work out real well, we could always go back the other way, right? There's nothing to say we can't. We're not locked into something, right?
No, we can, um, bring it in-house, and if we determine that that is not working or if that's not what we want to do, we can certainly, um, once again solicit bids.
Thank you.
Some of the, uh, the concerns that Mr. Cass had, so listing out some of the, um, you know, things that we maybe couldn't have or didn't have the, the skill set to have, so that, some of those are taken care of with the hiring of new employees or different, you know, so those pieces. Everything that he mentioned are things that are happening now with the current FBO and then.
With the current FBO, correct.
Okay, and then would be brought in with new?
Yep, and, um, with bringing it in-house, we do have training protocols and modules that our fuel, uh, provider, uh, has offered for us to have, um, and then also for onsite training as well.
And the, the reason to bring it in-house is primarily cost advantage?
Um, it's, we feel it's going to be cost-effective, and the employees that will be doing the FBO services would also be able to work in other areas of the airport potentially. So right now, we pay the FBO, and those employees do FBO services, and we have airport employees. So if it's a slow day at the airport and there's not a lot of planes coming in, those employees are underutilized, so this will allow us a lot more flexibility.
Within the department or across the department?
Um, well, within the airport department.
So essentially, it was a cost savings. It's not going to be a service drop, it's a cost savings.
Um, the, the cost is, would be equal to the low bid, so it, but we feel that we will get, um, greater flexibility for our airport and efficiencies.
Sounds like better service, but that's fine.
Any other questions for the director or the rest of the board? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and we have a support. If there are no other questions, um, may have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12V, uh, Resolution 23-08.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2308, approving the Airport Rescue Grant Agreement, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $59,000.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions, comments? Okay, I have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Thank you. 12W, uh, for budget adjustments.
Can I make a motion to approve the 23 budget adjustments as presented?
Support. Thank you. I have a motion support. Any questions or comments? Miss, roll call? No. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12X, the ambulance mileage distribution.
This time, I would move to approve the agreement for ambulance, ambulance mileage distribution with China Township.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion support. Any questions, comments? How many do we have left?
Um, we were missing one, and I believe that one did come in, so you'll see that in June.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion support. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12Y, the ambulance mileage distribution with Cottrell.
Like to make a motion, uh, to approve the agreement with, for ambulance mileage distribution with Cottrell Township.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion support. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12Z, uh, the ambulance mileage with Wales Township.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for ambulance mileage distribution in Wales Township.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion support. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Maybe. Oh, yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12AA to, uh, regarding our meeting times.
At this time, I move to revise the regular board meeting start time to 4:00 PM for the months of June, July, and August.
Do I have a support?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12AB, the, uh, 911 Manning Table Adjustment.
This is mine, I'm sorry.
No.
No, it's not my.
No, AB.
Well, I, he, um, A, he just might not.
Oh, I do, my goodness. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to remove two part-time 911 operator positions and add two full-time communication officer positions to the central dispatch manning table.
Support.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We're, we're on motion 17,000, so it's okay if we get a little slow at this part. I have a motion support. Uh, any questions or comments? May have a?
Any comment? Just I had a letter from the fire chief in Clyde of all that, some of the stress out there and some of the compensation levels, and if you guys all got the email, I responded back to them. I guess it, maybe this will help alleviate some of the under-manning, is it? So that's good to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 12AC for the court clerk position.
This time, I move to approve the addition of a court clerk III position through the end of December 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Roll call? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, item 12AD for District II ARPA projects.
Like to make a motion to approve District II Rescue Plan Project for engineering services for sewer pump station and four sewer system for Fort Grasset Township in the amount of $59,300.
Second.
Thank you. And this is out of, still out of the money I have set aside from our ARPA. And there's, uh, this is going to be for, um, there's a proposal of a potential campground, some more recreational pieces on Parker Road near the dog park. Uh, we're adding water, they're adding water lines as well, so there will be water at the dog park and, uh, in the spot where we have a community garden, so this kind of falls into that project all along that mile. Thank you. May I have a roll call? Any other questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. 12AE with, uh.
This time, I would move to support the Thumb Coast TV Agreement, the amount of $12,000 for term May 1/23 through April 30th of '24.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and a support. Any questions or comments? Prior to budget talks, you know, when we start doing that, can we take a look at the different subscriptions and things that we have? Because I feel like after a couple of years, you get lost in, you know, different, like, radio services, and that's for veterans, or the Thumb Coast, and what we have, just some of those agreements, if we could.
You mean like summarize them?
Summarize them and see what, you know, what are we still utilizing? And are we paying for subscriptions we don't need? I mean, every time I get a bank statement, I'm paying for something that kids downloaded.
Would that fall under various departments? Would that be one particular department?
So we do have, um, the countywide membership, some, like our SEMCOG, our MAC, our NACO, those all fall under our other legislative, so I can bring the board a listing of everything that's paid for under there. That's countywide. We do have a lot of department-specific things that that department utilizes, but I think what Commissioner Baldwin might be looking for is more of the larger overarching ones.
Yes, and like, um, CSTB, that I'm learning more about that, but I think that's a pay-to-play. Um, so just some of those things that we're involved in, it's the Community Services Coordinating Body.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so it's, you know, I, I, when I look at all of the different boards and committees that we all sit on individually, there are dozens, and some are pay-to-play and some are not. And are there duplications? Is there a way to tidy some of that up? Or are we everywhere we're supposed to be? So just, not anything, not a, not a rush, but the things that are costing money, maybe to just evaluate and make sure that we're still getting the value or we're not duplicating it, if that's okay?
Do we still need it?
Potentially, right? Thanks. Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12AF, Resolution 2309.
Like to make a motion to ad, adopt Resolution 23-09 for performance resolution for the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
I have a motion support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12AG, Policy 421.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to forward Policy 421 Internet Technology and Communication Equipment Services to the June regular board meeting for final adoption.
Support.
Okay, and is this the? I know I looked. Is this the Tic Tac?
No.
No, we did that one. But this is the.
This, I think this was just updating the policy that they had in place.
Uh, that's correct. Our current, our technology policy was, um, quite outdated. It actually addressed like which employees were and weren't allowed to access the internet. Um, so it was, it was very old. So it, it's basically clean up. Um, there is nothing new in it.
Thank you.
Other than updating that old language.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion support. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12AH.
This time, I move to approve the Pitney Bowes postage meter purchase in the amount of $18,142.88 and then the associated five-year service agreement in the amount of $3,255.05 per year. That was in memory of, uh.
It's a good story. Should tell that at parties. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a support? Did we get a support?
Support.
Thank you.
Whatever he said, whatever he said, I support.
Questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12AI.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 County Veteran Service Fund Grant Application in the amount of $146,872.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Roll call. Is it?
Aye.
Aye. No. Great.
Voice is fine.
Aye.
You're confusing.
Your head shakes. I'm not, no. Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12AJ.
I would move to approve fiscal year 2024 Recovery Court Grant Application with the Michigan Drug Court Grant Program and the Federal Office of Highway Safety Planning Recovery Court Grant in the amount of $105,100. No sense.
Support.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that gets through that list. Administrators report.
All right, I will be brief this evening. Our Spongy Moth Spray has been scheduled for May 22nd. It's much smaller this year. As you'll remember, there are 320 acres being covered this year. So the spray will be happening in Clyde, Columbus Township, Fort Grasset, Kimball, and St. Clair Township. So if you see low-flying planes on the 22nd, it is us with our Spongy Moth Spray. Retirement Board met earlier this week. Our first quarter investments, we are up 4% so far this year, which is good, and starting to recover a bit of what we lost last year. Uh, earlier today, we're notified by the landfill that, um, Eagle would like to come to our landfill and create an educational video for, um, highlighting different landfill operations and.
Who's doing that?
Um, the State Department of Energy in Great Lakes.
Used to be.
Yeah. So that filming will happen sometime in June. And last, we received the RFPs for the lobbyist, um, we received four different proposals back, and I will be working with the board chair on how he would like that selection committee to look, um, that's all this evening.
Thank you, any questions for Miss Hipting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to file for report? Normally we do.
Do we?
It was verbal.
Well, yes, motion to receive and file the administrator's report. Who has it, anybody have it?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks. I'll support it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous business, does anyone have a miscellaneous business?
I would just like to note how smoothly thing, things went without Jeff here, I thought for the record we could just put that on there, that's it.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, we do have a couple of poets on the board, just-
Yes, I knew that, Davey, I got that, yeah.
Some are more talented than others. Um, the, the question though, did come up about, um, ARPA funds and making a, you know, moving forward or trying to make some hard and fast decisions, and I, I don't know at what point, you know, I think in the beginning, before there was any mention of any kind of clawback, I felt confident in making sure that we were spending where we needed to and where the needs were, and not just going out immediately and spending all the money like it's burning a hole in our pocket. The clawback piece, in conversation, makes me a little nervous, um, that said though, we have an awful lot of projects, and so I'm just speaking from my district, um, we ha, I have a lot of asks to, uh, for the Birchville Water, and right now, if we get both asks, um, from Peter's office and from McLean's office, there's actually more, I, I think we'd be awarded more than the project is costing right now, if we don't get that money though, virtual still has a problem, so there's, for me personally, I would like to see what happens with the earmarks, and we should know October, November, before making a decision, because if, if then we are going to talk about putting more money toward other county projects and back into districts, I, my ask would be different, you know, depending on how this falls out, so I don't know how up, how many others have congressional asks in, but that's, that's kind of where I stand on that.
I'd like to start seeing us fill, start, you know, at least allocating these funds for the county needs, and, I mean, I think we need to start whittling that number down, you know, 'cause I know the sheriff's departments came to me, 'cause I'm in emergency services, and I know other departments have came to you, probably Carrie, for different asks, and I think we need to bring these to the board.
I'd like to comment on that, I've been very consistent from the outset, that, you know, this 26-mile road dispersment was not well supported, and it's moved in a different direction, and we carved out 7 million for the county, that was another thing that I supported, in addition to the lost revenue piece of the 33 that went, 'cause townships and municipalities got 33 million, county got 33 million, we carved out some lost revenue, did some employee things, did other stuff before I got on the board, when I got on the board, there was some, some left, there was talk about sending it down to IRA, and that's all kind of changed now, 'cause I think there's federal earmarks and other things going that might take care of that for those that want that project to go forward, but I've always said I wanted a part of it carved out for the county, which we did, I probably would have went more like 5 million, we went 7, that's okay, but then the balance, I'm going to push really hard, that, that balance gets allocated to the townships, and I'm not going to support any vote that piecemeals it, I don't want to wait to see who gets what and piecemeal everything and then let it go, I think we should divide it equally amongst the districts, and then let the districts get busy with what they're doing, and to whatever level that we're going to do, now maybe there's some carve-outs for other stuff, I don't know, we can talk about that, but that's my position, but I would like to, I was aware of this clawback issue 90 days ago, when they're talking about it, and now with the, what's going on in Washington and, you know, budget talks and the debt ceiling and all this other stuff, it's kind of uncomfortable, I, I think we do need to just get that out there, make a decision, I'd like to make one vote on it of the balance, so it serves everybody, get that done, and then get everybody moving, that's how I'd like to see it happen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in my district, I believe you've also received formal documentation, informer from Wales, it was a letter, in the other form it was resolutions, including IRA Township, that said they would not support any type of loan that any monies given to them, they would not pay back, so they were against any monies going to them that would have to be paid back, you received the CASCO resolution today, and they're in support of that, and in their letter, the resolution, they supported every municipality within Saint Clair County because they consider that every resident should get an equal amount of the money, and that's, uh, CASCO's, uh, position, and it's the same with Berlin, formal resolutions in Riley, and, uh, so all the, everybody I represent, uh, and what you're saying about the Peters, uh, potential earmarks coming this way, if we go and make the decision, then you, as you representing your district, will be able to use those monies, if you want to potentially set them aside, and then you find out you get the earmarks, well then you've got that monies for to represent the right, the balance within your, for other issues, but if we go ahead and get this, and I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later, if we're going to do this, uh, because everybody's got to do some planning to get this money in projects that fall into the, uh, usable uses of the ARPA funds, so I think we need to do this sooner, really, later I'd like to have this, a decision made one way or the other, whether it goes the way I potentially want it to go or not, but I think it needs to be made sooner rather than later, so I'd like to have this addressed in June, so, uh, we can move forward.
Question for Carrie, the monies we allocated on the 7 million, I'm assuming that's being allocated, spent, uh, RFPs, all that, we're moving right ahead on that.
Yep, RFPs are going out, um, you know, it'll, some of the larger projects are going to take time, but you did approve, um, the roofing project, or the architect anyway, and then they'll do the scope of work, and then those RFPs will go out, so we are moving forward with those and those equipment purchases.
Once we allocate, once you get the RFP and make a decision and have a contract, that's when the money is basically ours, right, I mean-
No, as, as far as allocated, as far as the clawback?
Well, this, this business of having the money allocated by 2026, does that mean a contract in place, or does that mean services-
Oh, by, by the end of 24, that means contracts in place, POs issued, projects underway.
So that's what I'm getting here with the one we did a couple weeks ago, the 7 million, we have the RFPs out, we're getting contracts in place, and it's going to get underway, what do you see as a timeframe, just very generally, end of summer we'll have that, a lot of that taken care of, or next year, or what do you see?
Well, there, there's a lot of different projects on there, so I see this carrying on over the next 18 months of, of all the different things on there, because with that 7 million, um, you know, like the roofing project, that was put in the CIP quite a while ago, so when the bids come back, it's very conceivable that they're going to come back higher than what the cost estimates were.
Once we commit to the contractor, though, that's considered allocated, correct?
That's correct, but I'm kind of phasing projects, because within that 7 million, if the roof project comes in 20% greater than we budgeted, that means something else.
So you've kind of prioritized how you let that out, so you get the most important done, and then we'll get to the other stuff, assuming we, we make everything.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
We still haven't, we still got some issues at, within the county though, like animal control, and we haven't finalized any issues with the Health Department either.
No, that's, um, nothing has been allocated for Health Department improvements, however, it, um, if for patient areas, clinic space, that could definitely fall under the public health use, so that would be an allowable use of those funds.
Can you update us on anything with this issue with the space next door, is any of that?
So I have reviewed the lease, um, been reviewing it with legal counsel, and, um, be, we will be sending a letter to the state regarding that, I've also met with the Health Department based on our last discussions, and they are going through and prioritizing, you know, if they were to stay there for a period, what projects would need to happen, I think the number one project they would like to see happen would be an ADA accessible bathroom for the public, because there currently isn't one, so if we have an individual in a wheelchair, right now we have to take them through the building and elevator to the employee area, because we do not have one available to the public.
They ever, how'd they ever build this building without doing that?
Because it was, um, built, I think, in the 40s, 50s.
It was DPW at one time, wasn't it?
Yes.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I believe we actually got the building in the 50s, so I don't know when it was constructed.
You're talking about the old health-
The old Health Department, where this, this building is 100% compliant.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner Bowman and I will be at a conference, the first meeting in June, so, just so you know, that's that first.
So you're picking your successors, what you're saying?
You're going to meet, miss the committee meeting?
I, we are both going to miss the committee meeting.
Where's this meeting at?
It's the policy conference. Hopefully I will get to talk to some of those lobbyists. So I, I mean, if there was going to be more of a conversation, just so you know, that that date, we will both be out of town for county business. Okay, any other miscellaneous business? Okay, item 15, receiving file?
Make motion, receiving file.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.